Let your reasons signify the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did not see the BCP physical appointment.
Well, we had a couple of them. I'm sure there was a little friend in this and Al still has another year to go, I guess.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, but we haven't cut it back.
Yeah. I did call Chris hit because he was aware of it and something was going to go up on Saturday.
Phil, can you kind of take that?
Yes, and I told him that a letter would be coming.
All right, just to talk a thing before we open the public input. In the file, we did have an invoice from Aquatic Control. This was, well, it wasn't in the invoices, it was because this is something that come from the expendable trust. It's fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for the first part of their project to prepare a special permit application. So what we need then is a motion to draw money from the expendable trust to pay for this. This is for the treatment of the sunburned.
May I, may I? One thousand four hundred study files. I do have a question. Does that also include their permits for alcohol?
It's issued.
It's one fund now, we're working together.
I know the funded ones, but...
This is just the sunburned.
This is just the operated. I'll make a motion that we move the fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars from the trust. And so?
Second. Okay.
What does it do? Do I like to be working on their permit?
Yes.
Because we weren't sending it. It went in, that has to be by specific date.
Right.
And that's the thing, I wasn't done and it's an additional twelve hundred bucks for that. But from that money that was at the town meeting, then we'll take in, we'll give you the bill for everything that we have.
Right.
In fact, not to get your hopes up too high, but I think that from the last minute I looked at, we may owe you a hundred dollars or something like that. Because when I proposed that article, it was a fifty-fifty deal. It was not, if we expended twelve thousand dollars and you were giving us six, then fine, I had no problem spending the six thousand. But if we only expended eleven-six, that's fifty-eight hundred they expended from each, and we would owe you two hundred dollars. That's the way I feel about it. I explained that to the board and they understand what I'm talking about. And we will get a more definitive accounting of how that worked out, and then I will give you a check if we do what you expect of you.
Did you talk to, uh...
Ed Neese?
Yeah.
John Kneef?
Ed Neese.
Ed, I haven't seen Ed since we brought up about the fifteen thousand dollars. He's been very difficult to get in touch with.
I tried to call him once.
Yeah, and I haven't ever reached him either. And I know we've started our permitting process to be sure the permit was in on time and got there.
All right. Oh, if I can hold it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll see if we can set up a meeting. We can still, why, anyway.
Karen, I got that sign and Bob has the key from Jackie's school?
Yeah.
And you gave him the key. Okay, and I use the paper sign.
Thank you.
And he gave me the key, and I was on board with that.
It's, well, people with presentations, it's about time for the public input anyway, so let you open the public input. Yes, please.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for that work session where you're getting into our, um, the report. Interesting comments, but they're not necessarily in order. Certainly, in this larger area, the most stable departments appear to be, and I don't know how you achieve this, it's just developed, but certainly the most stable ones where they don't have turnover, the majority of the departments do live in the town. And as I say, I don't know how you achieve that, but it does have an impact, that's very clear. A chapter or a strata are the two examples that I spoke to, you know, I spoke to all of them, if I know what they did. I don't know how you achieve it, but it definitely seems to make a big difference. I'm pleased that you touched on it. You can get policies from surrounding departments, LDC, and even the sheriff's department. I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I'm a bit hesitant, the amount of time I see the necessity on, um, reviewing and all the rest of it, but, you know, every three months or even twice a year, it's a lot of time. But again, you can probably get typical ones, how you review staff projects, from surrounding departments, or even the sheriff's department. How they function, because they have a reputation, as far as I can see, as being very professional. Interestingly, the time I was on the school board, when it was some important appointments, you can actually find, and I did this, not only me, but other members of the board, where the person was coming from. You drive up there and sit in the local cafe and talk to the local realtors, and you'd be amazed at how much information you'd get, such as, "My god, we'd like to get rid of this guy," or, and yet you'd get official, you'd get wonderful testimonials. In other words, they were so glowing, they wanted to get him out, you know. It can be done if it's, well, we're all in New Hampshire, but you can find out an awful lot unofficial, just by going to local cafeteria and the local realtor, say, if they're buying property in the, you know, things like this. You've got to have welcome information that wasn't on the official, and we did this a number of times on the school board. It would be nice if we can, this is slightly outside the area, when you've got dead zones, I call them, you know, between three and five in February, I think all the local towns, if we could have some way of sharing when we know it's really quiet time, we rotate, like Pittsfield takes, Pittsfield and Barnstead, we do the same thing, Yonerton takes. Because we're strapped, either you employ more police, or you work out some way of getting the coverage. It's an avenue that I think should be explored. Unfortunately, you won't talk to community engagement, because that one, there are two things when I was on the slide. The number of complaints mostly could be addressed with a simple phone call. Yes, we understand, we haven't dropped everything, we are making, I can't talk about the case, but we are still pursuing. Just a help, a five-minute phone call would get rid of fifty percent of the aggravations, because it may be a nonsense crime or misdemeanor, but to the person it's happened to, it's the center of their life at that time. And just a call, feedback, would eliminate an awful lot of the communities that get aggravated, and we don't seem to do that. It was very noticeable, if you remember last old home day, there was a policeman down there, I don't even know his name, mixing it with kids and handing out little badges and chatting, not in the law enforcement sense, but he's certainly connected. And I had currently, at that time, I had visitors from three countries that were bowled over by this, that didn't seem to like him. I also found out that that officer, whatever he was, did that his own back, he bought these little badges, please. It presented the policeman to the community in an entirely different light, not as a guy with a big gun, bulletproof vest and all the rest of it. It's inevitable, there's a distance between either military or police, if you're armed to the teeth. There's automatically, I don't care who you are, there's a barrier, and if you can break that down, get out and about in the community, I think it's safe for the police, and indirectly, they will learn an awful lot about what's going on. And there'll be very visible, much more visibility, ignore many officers if they're out. That one thing is that they're almost actively discouraged for chatting up people.
He did that at school with the meeting too, and he went to present one of the little girls with the badge, he said, "Now, take this badge, you have to promise to be good." She says, "I can't promise that." He says, "Well, you're honest, so as long as you promise to be honest." But yeah, it did, it makes a big impact on the kids.
Yeah, and it's like chucking a brick into water. It spreads, and as I say, an awful lot of the interaction between the community and the police can be solved, um, and go in a very positive way. I also happen to them, even in Barnstead, rural Barnstead, police can walk into a really bad situation, you know, it happens. The more knowledge they're getting from the community, the safer it is for them, no question about that. So, but as I say, it's not going to be a quick process, it's clear. But I think we can start going down the right track, and I welcome your words. I noticed, by the way, it said about community, I don't particularly want to, but I would recommend, if you are looking for members in the public, there's Mr. Glassman here and Paul Vince. Neither of them are connected to any particular group in town, and certainly Paul Vince has got a very good external legal type mind. It can be real useful. So if you go at some stage in the future, they're two people I think will be very viable. I haven't mentioned it to either of them.
Okay.
I know it must be it, and thank you very much.
Well, you do know that you're on seven talents in the year.
The seven talents, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's meeting is, but...
No, I'll get an email from the...
Let me know.
The... Yeah. Actually, well...
Anyone else?
Joyce Parsons, I just have a few things to say. I commend you for following through on my challenge, you're doing a good job. I enjoyed being at your work session tonight and thinking you're making a lot of headway. I did have a couple comments, listening to you though, one of the things, I understand your job descriptions are coming. And an evaluation has to have a job description. What an evaluation is, you have given them assigned duties, and you grade them in one form or another, as James has said, it can be a number system, whatever, just writing down, yes, they are following through, no, they are not. But if you don't give them a job description, you have nothing to evaluate them on. Because they don't know what they're doing, and you don't know what they're doing. The goals are the end target in evaluation. After you've gone through the evaluation, you set the goals. Is he going to correct his shooting? Is he going to strive to get more classes, whatever? Your chain of command, as a supervisor, all my boys will only come to me. If I do not solve their problem, or come to an agreement with them in some way, only then can they go to my supervisor. And my supervisor, the first question is, have you gone to your first supervisor? If they have not seen me, she will not talk to them, she sends them back to talk to me first. That is chain of command. You do not go above until the bottom one either cannot work out your situation or has worked out. One of the things is the follow-through. There have always been complaints about the police department to the selectmen in all the years I've lived here. You do not follow through. You're setting goals for this gentleman, you're setting requirements for this gentleman. You need to have meetings, you need to have reports, you need to have dates set when those things must be done. And if they're not, then you need to follow through and write him up at that point, some type of punishment. You can't just, you can't set a meeting up with him or tell him he has to do something, and then when it doesn't happen, just ignore it. You have to take action. That's what it's all about. The added boys on the record, that's great. That's really great, because it does make the employee feel good, and it gives you something to read when you do the evaluation by reading what's on the record. The maintenance schedule, every piece of this town should have a maintenance schedule. The office should have one. Who's taking care of the machines? Are you oiling the shredders? What's happening with the toners? Are you having a repair man come in and check them out on a periodic basis and do cleaning, whatever else? Everyone should have a maintenance schedule. Chris is worried how to do this, but it's not impossible. He can tell you, anyone can work out a maintenance schedule. And Mary should do it over the police officer, machines and the different things she has, she should have a maintenance schedule. And if, when you require him to do a report or to turn in something to you, and he does not, that is insubordination. It's something you can write them up about. I'm trying to think of the, can you talk about not having a boss? The president's got a boss, because if he hasn't do his job, we're going to be voted out of office. But everybody under him reports to someone in later. And, you know, the selectmen have a job to do, is to take care of the town and run the town. And in that process, you need to run the departments, not micromanage, but give them a description and tell them, "This is what we want done," and work with them on it. So thank you again, and I hope you continue to follow through with what you've started.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the comments, it's been a huge number. It's been working out. Does anyone else have any items for our public input? We're all set up. Rob, can I ask you? There's a chance for someone. Do you have a surprise issue with this, Chris, or are you just?
I just came to this meeting today.
Mr. Brett, you got her name wrong. Brett, you got her name wrong.
That's all right, just may not want to call me, everyone knows what I'm talking about. Just by what I said.
By the way, this is a public thing. Chris did pay me by that place on our road today, it was a problem.
Well, we'll be going over that a bit later. I'd like to close the public input at this time, and I, two new folks are here on-site drug testing.
You're talking a little closer.
Yeah, a lot closer.
Let's breeze through this. You already have a program in place. My name's Kimberly Freee. I own a company called...
Your first name?
Kimberly, yeah.
Okay, this name is on the line here as president.
That's me.
And president.
Thank you. I know managing member doesn't sound so great. This is my father, Dave, as the account development manager. So we have to, did we get the proposal, or should we just?
I had to.
Okay, agreed, okay. So currently, you do have a program in place, and you have testing for your DOT employees at the DPW, who tested the rate of fifty percent for drugs and ten percent for alcohol by the end of the year. You have non-DOT firefighters that hold a CDL license, and your police officers, and those are in, those should be in a pool together, because they wanted to test them at the same rates as the DOT. So fifty percent for drugs and ten percent for alcohol will be tested by the end of each year. And then a third consortium we're looking at is your firefighters without a CDL endorsement. And currently, they're being randomly selected at a twenty percent rate for drug testing. I don't think there's alcohol in the program.
You don't think there's alcohol?
There is, you think there's alcohol? Go back. All right, I wasn't sure what you were currently doing, so. So we are looking at the three consortiums, and currently, your firefighters, I'm not really sure what's going on with the current situation, but we would suggest that we move your firefighters into, that have the CDL license, into a pool by themselves, because, actually, with the police officers, because we wanted them to select at fifty percent and ten percent, like the DOT. But you can't co-mingle mandated employees and non-mandated employees. And firefighters are exempt from the DOT regulations, so we need to separate them out. But we can still test them at the same rates, okay? So you would continue to test them, they would just be in their own separate.
So you're saying firefighters, police, and the DOT would be in one pool, or the DOT is separated?
DOT is separate.
And then firefighters?
Yeah. So two, so two non-DOT pools, one with the CDL-licensed firefighters and the police officers in that one. And then your third one would be the non-CDL-endorsed firefighters. Yes.
Just one question.
Mm-hmm. Yes. I'm sorry.
We also have employees that drive their own vehicles to go do town business.
Okay.
And they're included in the pool.
Which, okay, so they are, would be added to the twenty percent group?
Yeah, and just as another correction, it was my understanding, they're all firefighters, even though they're exempt from DOT regulations, they're required by the fire con to get a CDL.
Right.
They need to have CDL.
Wasn't it that if they were driving a fire truck, that they wanted them to have a CDL license?
They do.
Okay, but then there's other firefighters that don't drive the truck? Because they don't have a CDL, so we still want to randomly test them? Right. Anybody that, I mean, you can choose your types of employees to be tested. And let's talk, we'll talk further down about the policy. So are we square on the three separate consortiums? Okay. So we have a fee to start up your program with us, and it's for fifty-one-plus employees. We have tiered groups, so you're in the fifty-one-plus range, and it's two hundred and sixty dollars to set you up. And then we drop that fee after your first year to two-twenty. Okay.
One of the reasons that we brought this up to you, as I was called by the lawyer, Agent Chris, that there was some kind of confusion on how many people were picked in a particular quarter, and who was calling the annoying help. I understand, too many of you know the help, what's going on. So what we found out was that there was a group of people that you wanted tested with your third-party administrator at the present time, and put them in a group that they should not have been in. Okay? So that's why we've taken this proposal and separated it for you in a correct group that they should be by, Department of Transportation, and so on and so forth. The nice thing about this is, we're still going to let you pick and choose who you have in those groups, and how many percentages you want in those groups. Okay, so if you have CDL firemen, you say, "I want those guys tested just like DOT," okay, there's that group. "But I also have firemen that don't have CDLs, I don't really need to test them quite as much. I just want them to know that we're on top of things." Now, they're a different pool. So you have a fifty percent up here with CDL drivers, non-DOT. Department of Public Works, DOT, all by themselves, non-DOT. So non-DOT can be policemen, firemen who do not drive, or you would decide who could be in that category.
Such as your employees driving a company vehicle.
Let's say you have an employee that said to drive a small company truck, town truck. He doesn't have a CDL, but you know, well, he's driving a company vehicle, I want him tested like the firemen that drive the trucks. Put him in that pool.
Right.
So you could pick on, and who goes in those pools, versus a gentleman that might be Moing Wong, the senator. We don't need to have him tested maybe as much. And these are just examples as the DOT drivers. So you have them in the non-DOT pool. So we brought this all back together on the way that this should be put out in there. So it was some issues with the last TPA, but that happens. So that's where Chris came in and asked us to jump in and try to straighten it out, make it look a little better.
Okay, so consortium fees include happiness available for emergency after-hours collections, such as a need for post-accident testing. We are basically one of the only companies in this area that is available for you after hours. Right now, your current TPA is Concord Hospital, and they do not provide after-hour services. So if your guys are out plowing, and there's an accident, there's nowhere for them to go to have their drug and alcohol testing done. So a lot of times that happens, and you don't have something set up for it, because you've never had the incidents happen before. We are available 24/7, so that if that arises, you're covered. We also will maintain your random selections and provide you with quarterly statistic reports for each of your groups of people, so you can see how it's going throughout the year. I don't know if you, Chris, do you have DOT physicals for your drivers, even though you're exempt?
I just brought that back up. The first year I was here, we did, they lapsed after two years, and currently we do not. Something that we're going to explore next week.
Okay. Currently, municipalities are exempt from doing DOT physicals, which, like you said, are every two years, depending on the person's health and whatnot. A lot of the municipalities that we currently have also do the DOT physicals anyways. And we keep track of those physical expiration dates, so that they don't run out, etc. Right. Well, we have the capability of tracking those expiration dates and letting them know ahead of time before they expire.
Yeah, but you don't, you only do the fact that you don't have anything to do with physicals. You're only reporting that, okay, this, this math stat says against you, every two years.
No, we do physicals too. We have a few nurse practitioners that work for us, and they will travel out here to do DOT physicals, they just need a private area. Or they can come into Concord to our office, where we do physicals in the early mornings, mid-days, and sometimes at night, to accommodate after-hour schedules for people. So we do do physicals, if that's something that you're interested in, but like I said, you're exempt from them at the current time for your DOT employees, but I just wanted to let you know that we do offer that. So let's talk about a policy real quick. One of the DOT regulations is that you have to have a written drug and alcohol policy. is that you have to have a written drug and alcohol policy. And that everyone has to sign that, of course. And we write policies. We'll come out and interview you per se. We have a questionnaire that will ask you questions like, "Are you going to work with somebody that tests positive, or are you going to terminate them?" And we go through a whole set of questions. And then we take that and we write a custom policy for you. It also has the required content that the DOT requires you to have in your policy. And that would be for the DOT drivers. With your additional firefighters and such that do drug testing, we always suggest that you have a policy for that too because you're gonna run into the same issues with the drug testing program for them as you do with your DOT, possibly. So, we can write a combined policy. We just did one for the town of Hancock, and that I was very pleased with for DOT and non-DOT as well. And we can write a combined policy for three hundred dollars.
So, have you seen the policy you have?
I have not. And I would be glad to look over that as well. Because if you do have the required content or that's all you need to add, that's something that you can do definitely.
You didn't see the thing so long you talked or mentioned briefly about?
Oh yeah, we absolutely do. And we put it before we retire. Okay. Okay. So we'd be glad to look at that for you and see if it has all the information that you have to have. Just for the DOT part anyways. Also with your DOT employees, there are these small booklets available. They're from J.J. Keller. And they give out educational information regarding the drug testing that they're required to do.
This is what they look like. And they have an inside cover page where the driver or whoever they want to have can sign it, rip it out, and it can go in a file that they receive educational material on drug and alcohol.
They require that there's some type of educational material to those employees. Okay, so. Let's talk about onsite services because this is really important. Currently, you're sending your employees down to Concord Hospital in Concord. So with us, you wouldn't have to send them all the way to Concord or to the nearest collection site. Or I don't know if you send them with a supervisor right now. Chris, do you drive them or do you send them on their way?
We send them in three hours.
Okay. So good example. They're gone for three hours. With us, we come over to the shop, and we're there for five minutes to see one employee, and they're back to work. So it's very convenient. So you're, you're saving a lot of time. You're lost production. And the pay and the travel time and the gas. Are you sending them in a company vehicle? Most likely. And something that we always don't really like to talk about, but it could possibly happen that they're gonna try to mask or adulterate the test between when Chris tells them to leave and when they get to the collection site. It is a fact that it does happen. We hope that it's not here on the holidays. But it's still, you are given that a period of time to try to adulterate the sample on the way to the collection site. So if we just show up here, and he says, "John, they're here to see you," he doesn't have that opportunity to try to mask or adulter the test. And that's very important. So five-panel drug screens, which is what the DOT requires to do, which is test for marijuana, cocaine, PCP, opiates, and amphetamines, that would cost you one hundred and five dollars for us to come out here. But we've decided that if you're gonna do all of your non-DOTs as well with us, that we're gonna set it at a hundred dollars per drug screen for onsite, for DOT and non-DOT. In our office, those panel, that panel drug screen is sixty-six dollars. What I would like you to keep in mind regarding the five-panel drug screen is that it does not test for things like oxycodone, benzodiazepines, methadone. Some of the latest and most abused drugs out there are not included in the five-panel DOT drug screen. So always keep that in mind when you have any reasonable suspicion and you think that somebody is using, and then you go to send them for a DOT five-panel drug screen, and they come back negative because you didn't test them for what they were using. So, for an instance like that, I always go back to the policy and say, "Hey, let's add in that for post-accident and reasonable suspicion testing, you can test for any drug, and you can do any type of a test." So that we could actually expand the panel to test for all of these additional substances that are out there that people are abusing. Okay? Now, if you are interested in talking about the wider panels for your non-DOT employees, you can do that. You can test for those. You're talking somewhere in the range up to one hundred and thirty dollars per test when you expand out those additional tests. Alcohol testing onsite are sixty-six dollars. If there's a positive, we have to do an confirmation test in fifteen minutes. It's an additional test. And like we talked, we already talked about the physicals, so that's okay. They're one hundred and seventeen dollars onsite, and they're eighty in our office, yeah.
Question. Can I draw that with, you know, alcohol test? Is that done by, oh, it can't be done by blood?
Breathalyzer. Yep. Breathalyzer, or saliva, yeah. We're certified breath alcohol technicians. We have two machines so that if we have an issue with one, we have a backup. We also have miniature breathalyzers that are used for screening tests, typically for randoms. And then if you got a positive, you use a big breathalyzer to confirm it. So it's often mainly all done by breathalyzer. So, positive drug screens incur an additional fifty-five-dollar charge. And this is just because of the time and the medical review officer being involved. Dr. Hefner works for us, and he will interview anybody who tests positive. The process is that we do the collection. It goes to the lab. The lab reports it to Dr. Hefner. If it's positive, he contacts the donor. So you and I are never notified yet. He contacts the donor. He, it takes, he has specific requirements he has to follow. He has to talk to them, try to get ahold of them three times in the first twenty-four hours, and so on. Once he connects with them, he will interview them. If there's a prescription involved, then he will take care of that, and he'll end up, you know, reporting the drug screen to you as the town administrator or whoever is gonna be the contact for the town. So because of that, that's where you get the fifty-five-dollar charge for the. For the positive.
Fifty-five extra.
Yeah, for a positive.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we've just added a service to our services that we offer now, and it's for follow-up programs. I don't know if your policy, is your policy termination if someone's positive? Or do you work with them currently?
Oh, yeah. The availability of working with them if they so desire.
Okay.
To, etc.
Okay. So what we will do is if you have someone that tests positive, we will walk you through the steps of what the requirements are. Such as, setting them up with a substance abuse professional, getting them to an educational class, and then they do a return-to-duty test that has to be negative. And then they're gonna have to do a minimum of six follow-up tests in the first year. And that can go on for up to five years. So, a lot of times, the follow-ups get forgotten about at some point. So we decided that we're gonna keep track of them for you and let you know, hey, it's time to send such-and-such for their follow-up test. So we keep track of all of those for you. And we'll keep track of them all the way through the end of the person's, you know, job with you, if they leave, and so on and so forth. If you choose to have us come out to do drug screening before seven in the morning or after five at night, which sometimes it's a convenience factor for third-shift people, there's an additional twenty-five-dollar charge. But it's not per test. It's just a one-time fee. So if we come out and do three firefighters on their night shift, then it will be just the one twenty-five-dollar charge. Sometimes people can't be on command. Because of that, we have to wait for them because once you start a drug screening process, you can't stop it until you've completed the collection. So we give everyone a half hour upfront because typically, people can go in about a half hour. If it's any time after that, then they charge an hour and a half. I do wanna interject on that and say that if we have one person that we're testing, or we have a group of people we're testing, and the first person can't go. So they sit aside, and they're drinking their water. And we're gonna see all of the other people, and it takes longer than a half hour. We're not gonna charge you for the first person that's waiting because we're still seeing your other employees. So, it's really a half hour after the last person's completed. After-hours, we talked about that. It is a two-hundred-dollar flat rate plus mileage as well as the collection fees. Hopefully, you don't ever have to incur that fee. But sometimes it does happen, and we are available. If you need something during business hours, it's a fifty-five-dollar hour, per hour, plus your mileage and your fees. So, I wanted to talk to you about how you wanted to set up your programs because we have different consortiums that we offer. I think you'll end up going with the standalone because currently, you were having this situation of being in a general consortium with other companies. And you were kind of diluting the pool, and therefore, all of your employees kept getting nicked for randoms. So once we separate them out, you'll only be in your consortium with just your employees. And you won't be having to have that. You'll know how many employees you have to test in each quarter. So, before we talk about that, this is kind of confusing. So that's why I wanted everyone to have a copy of the proposal. But the second paragraph reads, "We have a custom-built computer program called TestTrack." Okay. Where the third page, below the bullets, it's the second paragraph. "TestTrack is a program that we have built that keeps track of all of the random selections as well as the individual, company, and municipality donor history records." The program automatically rounds up to one or the next whole number when randomly selected because we cannot test for zero or part of a person. Makes sense? The DOT states that recommended rates for testing are minimum rates because occasionally, the numbers do not round perfectly. For instance, if you have a small group of people to select from, you may end up testing slightly more than the posted minimum percentage. So you only have sixteen of you guys. And that means you really only need to do less than one of them for an alcohol. But with the program, you're gonna end up testing four for the year, one for each quarter. Because it's gonna round up. If you were to, so let's talk about the standalone consortium benefits. It's available for both DOT and non-DOT. You can select the testing percentage rates. So for the firefighters that didn't have a CDL endorsement, you wanted to select a slightly lower rate than the DOT, that's fine. If you want to select it twenty percent for drugs and ten percent for alcohol, we have companies that test for twenty percent for drugs and twenty percent for alcohol. Because they say, their theory is that alcohol is just as bad as the drugs. So they want equal rates. So you get to choose those rates for any of your non-DOT groups. It's helpful with budgeting as you will know in advance how many people will be tested for the year. And it's more effective than a general consortium because your employees are the only employees in the consortium. So one or more will be selected each quarter, and then they're less likely to use drugs and risk being caught. If they're in a general consortium, they say, "I may or may not be selected, so I'm gonna just try it and hope for the best." So it's really much more effective program when you're in your own pool because you know that somebody's gonna be selected from your group. If you do wanna go to the general consortium, there are some pros and cons. Like it's available for DOT and non-DOT. We have a small consortium for our non-DOTs. It has about seventeen companies with over fifty employees total. And it's steadily growing because we have companies that are popping up saying, "Hey, I have someone who drives a smaller tow truck for me. They don't meet the DOT regulations, but we still wanna test." But it's just the one guy. So we put them into our non-DOT consortium. Then, in our general DOT consortium, we have over a hundred and ninety companies, and there are over five hundred employees in that consortium currently. The set random testing rates are the same as DOT for the non-DOT. So fifty percent for drugs and ten percent for alcohol. With this general consortium, your employees may or may not be selected each quarter. And that's what you're doing now with Concord Hospital. Companies may be terminated from the general consortium for not completing their testing as this will adversely affect the companies in the consortium. I do not like when companies don't complete their random testing because it makes it so that we have to select additional drug tests for the next quarter to make up for those companies. And that is not fair to the companies that do their random testing. So we have no issue terminating companies from the consortium that don't complete their testing so that they're not affecting the other clients. We take a lot of pride in making sure that our random testing is completed. So like I said, most of the municipalities will choose the standalone option because it allows for easier budgeting. And you decide what the push-through rates are so you can predict the number of random tests for over here. It's very easy to switch over to us. All you have to do is give us a statement saying that you're moving your employees over to our consortium. We pick up where they left off. They're not duplicating any testing that you've already done this year. Let's see. We do offer this new consortium for firefighters in their own call. I don't know how you currently handle them going out to do random drug screens. Do they get paid? Are they required to do it on their own time? Yes? Okay. We've run into some towns that have volunteer firefighters that will not be paid to go to do their drug screens. And so, they said, "How can we test them?" And we show up at their meetings, we schedule them ahead of time with the chief of the fire department. And we'll go into the meeting. We have a spreadsheet that we set up using Excel. And we do a random selection of the people that are actually at the meeting. And we'll do some randoms right then. The cons to that, you need to think about the fact that who's gonna show up to the meeting? If they think that I might be there, then they're not gonna show up to the meeting if they don't know if they're gonna pass. However, it's still a deterrent. If you see the same person not coming to the meeting, well, there's probably a reason why. So, but that option is there. But since you do pay, I don't think that you're gonna need to use that. To fulfill the DOT requirements for supervisory training, we will need to have at least one of your supervisors we will need to have at least one of your supervisors complete the training. The training is to teach anyone that gives safety-sensitive instructions, such as CREST, to the DOT employees, how to recognize possible substance abuse or intoxication at work. In essence, it gives your supervisors the accreditation needed to respond to a suspected employee should they have a question. Obviously, we suggest for more than one supervisor to complete the training. And for your non-DOT employees, that's probably a good idea as well. Because you're, like I said, you're gonna run into the same scenarios with one type of employee than you will with the other. And we do offer group rates for that, so if you get above six people, then we can talk about that. But it's a per-person rate of $105. It's a three-hour course. And we talk about the different substances that you're testing for, how to handle the situation, and what you're looking for from your employees. You know, are they constantly late? Are they... their change in appearance? You can talk about that.
The other thing that it does is, like, we did Bristol. They had four or five of the firemen officers go to class for the simple reason that they're gonna make a call on a firefighter on a Saturday afternoon at a fire that he's been drinking. And he's approached and said, "What gives you the right to tell me that I've been drinking?" Now, you've got something to stand on, on the town side. They've had the training, they can make the call. So, it's not just hearsay or guess. It's there and it's grounds to stand on. It's the same course that the federal DOT has their people do, sort of follows right on their guidelines. So, we recommend it for non-DOT situations as well. For anywhere that you're gonna have a random program or a drug program, you wanna have that supervisor trained. And it's just, you know, it's just a good thing to have anyway. And it's always good to have two to concur. You may not necessarily call this on the spur of the moment if maybe over a period of a week or two weeks or whatever. You see certain things happen to that employee, late for work, the way they dress, certain, so on, you know, odd things like that. So, if you can get two people to concur and meet this person, then you can make a real honest judgment of all when the time comes. So, it's very important to look at that training. We can do it here as well.
So, let's just talk about the pricing and then we're pretty much completed. So, your first consortium is your six DOT guys, CREST. It would require, if you had them in the standalone consortium, which I'm assuming that you would really like to go with, but... It would be for four drug screens a year, so $100 a drug screen, plus your four alcohol screens. So, you're looking at 664 for the whole year for your program. And also remember, if you hire people, you know approximately the number of people you might hire in a year. And always take into consideration that you may have an accident. So, if you take into consideration those two aspects plus your randoms, you're probably a little bit more than 664 for the year. Your second consortium are your 36 non-DOT firefighters with CDL licenses. And your police are also in that consortium, because you want them selecting at 50% for drugs and 10% for alcohol. You're looking at 18 drug screens and four alcohols for the year. And that adds up to $2,064 for the whole year. And remember, we do four random selections per year. So, those 18 drug screens and four alcohols, those are split into four quarters. Okay? Because we want you to have consecutive drug testing throughout the entire year. You don't wanna do all of your drug testing in January and not have anything for the rest of the year. Okay? Your third consortium is going to be your non-DOT firefighters without a CDL endorsement and probably the employees that drive a company vehicle and so on. And we're looking at four drug screens and we're gonna add the alcohol. I wasn't sure if you did currently, so I didn't put that in here. So, 400, you're basically looking at the same as your DOT goal, so 664 instead of the 400, because we will add the alcohol in. But remember, you can change those rates of testing for the Consortium Two and the Consortium Three. If you wanna start out at a higher rate and see if you have any issues throughout the year, then next year at a town meeting, you vote and you reduce the rate if you don't have any issues. Drop it to, you know, 30% or something like that. Okay? So, you have that to work with on both Consortium Two and Three. And then your annual fee, it drops, like I said, after the first year to 220. So, you're looking at a grand total of about $3,300, $3,400 with the alcohols. And that's what we have for you. Do you have any questions about drug testing in general? Or about your programs?
On the, okay, we have five DOT drug tests for the five types of drugs. And then we have $130 test that tests for... Is that... what is included in that? I mean, is all, anything that's not blood or something?
It's... It's what we refer to as an 11 to 12-panel drug screen. And it tests for all sorts of things. And the list is long for prescription drugs. Because the five-panel for DOT, it tests for opiates, which is one of the things. And in that, you're getting your hydrocodone, codeine, morphine, and heroin. And your hydrocodone is vicodin. But you're not testing for percocets. What's the difference? Well, percocets are oxycodone, or oxycontin, you hear that a lot nowadays. It's one of the highest abused drugs right now. The five-panel doesn't test for that. So, that's why we offer this wider panel drug screen. Anywhere from $105 up to $129 is our maximum. It's still here in the... You do offer hair testing. Hair testing is expensive, because it gives you a history of use. For instance, we cut the hair as close to the scalp as possible. And for every one and a half inches of hair that you test backwards, is three months of information. So, it's $200 for a test for three months. But if you have someone who has an accident and they don't report it to you, and then two weeks goes by, and then you find out that they had an accident, you have the option in your policy to do a post-accident test using a hair follicle. And you can see if they did it within two weeks ago.
Go along here.
Well, we can take body hair. Body hair looks bad here.
Body hair, regard testing. From your experience, if you had like 100 people taking the dot test, with five, and then 100 taking the expanded one, would you be getting more positives on the expanded or the expanded?
Marijuana is the number-one abuse drug, and that is in the workplace. And that is included in your five-panel. If you expand out to the 11 or 12-panel, you're gonna start to see positives for opiates, the opiate family, it extends. If someone is using heroin and they... Or, let's say, this is legitimate. You go to the doctors, because you have a backfire accident, and you're prescribed fentanyl and a percocet, and you get hooked on it. It's an addictive drug. It happens. Then, people, because they've stopped getting their prescription, start to get it elsewhere. And they'll get anything that they can get their hands on that's any type of an opiate family. So, you're talking Suboxone. They have methadone clinics that people use to try... Methadone blocks the symptoms from...
With the drug?
Thank you. Methadone blocks the withdrawal symptoms from opiate use. And so, you can reduce your opiate intake. So, that's supposed to help people get off of using opiates. Well, now they've expanded methadone out to another drug called Suboxone. And that's included in that.
Are those reportable or are they not with care?
I'm sorry?
Are those reportable to employees if you're under a doctor's care for, of course? The boxen?
Most, you can only get that through a doctor. You're supposed to only be able to get these through a doctor. But what you'll find is...
So, your doctor would call that person and check and ensure it's through a doctor?
Right. If doctor, if they tested positive, right?
Anything like percocet or anything, they would call the person?
Right. Yep. Doctor Kefner will review it with them. If it's a legitimate prescription, he will notify the town that it's actually a negative. Okay? So, your employees are not... They don't get in trouble for having a prescription drug. However, you need to know if they're on, you know, oxycodone.
But you don't charge the extra $55, right?
Right. And it's for, like I said, the MRO reviewing that period of time. You're way better off paying the $55 and finding out.
In the prescription medication is probably the most abused now everywhere.
Besides marijuana, yes.
It would be more beneficial to the community to have a wider span of weed, of the marijuana, and then it doesn't test with some of the opiates.
Right.
This is where the policy comes in, where you decide, we decide, working with you on this policy, where you're gonna draw the line with your medications. Are you gonna say, if you're in... if we hire you, we need to know if you're on a narcotic or barbiturate-type medication? Because we need to know, because we're liable, because of the town. Now, if they give that to you upfront, that person is gonna test positively every time they get picked. But you are going to know it, because you require them to do that. DOT, the driver is responsible to tell the motor carrier or you that they're on a prescription drug that's narcotic or therapeutic, not a blood pressure pills or anything like that. It's on a prescription, therapeutic narcotic. So, they have to tell the motor carrier. So, if the guy comes on DOT and he's got a legal prescription, and he tests positive, and he didn't tell you upfront, there's a policy's gotta come to play. So, those are things that lots of times, that I'm not saying that your lawyer didn't do a wonderful job, but he's not in the field that sees how this stuff pops up now. So, that's where we jump in and say, "What happens now?" What happens now if you've actually got a driver driving, and he didn't tell you he was on a legal prescription? And now he was involved in an accident, there's a lawsuit against the town.
Well, the other side for that, or not a piece for that anyway, is the prescription medicine, most days, you need to be careful operating machinery. That's all with ranks, then they shouldn't be driving.
That is correct. And in your federal regulations law, it says that you need to get a written permission from your doctor, after you tell him what your job restriction is, that you can work with that prescription. So, it puts it all right back on the doctor.
Because remember, you know, we have to be negative, if you will, about people abusing drugs. Okay? That's what our job is, to protect you. But there are people out there that have to... they live on a pain clinic. So, they have to take these medications in order to live. You've been on the medication for 30 years of your life. And you are right, do regular jobs, and you do regular things, and you live using this prescription. So, the doctor is going to give you a note that says that you're perfectly fine to work and operate machinery, because you've been on this substance for so long and you're controlled. So, there is that side of it.
Ken? Dave was looking for a direct answer to his question. If you had 100 people on the regular DOT and 100 people on the expanded, would you get more positives on the expanded than the DOT?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I mean marijuana, number one. That's your number-one abuse drug. That's the number-one test that we kept.
But that's on the DOT record.
That's the DOT five. The other side is you're gonna get positives for your opiate family branches, if you will. Suboxin, methadone, oxycodone.
Thank you.
Sure.
And one other thing I wanted to bring up for you, when I came up to visit with Chris and talked about the plan, there was a clarification that I told him that I would go to FEMBO DOT conference, which I did. And I asked for their guidance and interpretation on fire truck usage, so that there was no question. The operation of fire trucks and rescue vehicles while involved in an emergency and related operations, you are exempt from. DOT and Concord Federal said, "Related operations includes anything with that vehicle." To and from, to mechanics, to the maintenance department, wherever. To relation of the fire department's job and the emergency vehicle. So, if you've got a gentleman that's driving that truck, to passes in Concord or wherever, that's fire-related, so they're not gonna block. That's the exemption. So, to the fire, back to the fire, that's all part of the data.
Yep.
That's the way that they would treat it. So, that was, I knew that you were interested in part of that, so.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get to... So, how do we...
I know it's a lot. So, that's why I wanted to get it all on paper for you to take with you to read over. Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks.
Second, I'm gonna do a computer. Okay. If I play my first one, please. Please, the panel. Good. Here to give an update to the town, Select Board to end the town on the process of nominating the Suncoop River as designation into the river management protection program. And some handouts are being passed out. I have an additional, I don't know, that's a bit of an overview. This wasn't in, I believe this is, not a little bit different, to supplement that. I'd like to give a bit of a, a little bit of a overview, both in terms of some of the hist... And make sure that we get to the history of this project, the purposes of it, where we are on the timing of things, the involvement, and upcoming opportunities for involvement and input. Like to get your questions and concerns about this, and if you've got support for it. And if you, and wanna finish up on with steps that could be taken by the community, further steps to be taken, what will be asking of you, Select Board, as well as Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and any other groups that might have an interest, groups or individuals that might have an interest in the nomination process. And there are, there may be a couple of details that come up to touch base on. So, the, as you, as you recall, in the fall, I came to you along with the Rivers Commit... The Rivers Coordinator from New Hampshire DOT, Jack Colberg. And we talked a bit about the program, what the Rivers Management Protection Program is, and why the Suncoop is being proposed for nomination or nominated, while we're working on nomination to designate it for that program. It is a program that was set up in the late 1980s to provide some state attention to the river, as well as ensuring that there is local input. There were, there were programs prior to this that did not have that local input component. And so, this is a, this is a partner sort of protection, in a sense, but also an opportunity for enhancing visibility of the rivers. There are... A, there is an eight-step process that's pointed out on the second page of the colored sheet that I handed out, second set of pages. In the fall, we had, there had been activity in the southern portion of the river, down, of course, the Epsom disaster that was associated with the Mother's Day flood, where the river changed course. And the history of the Suncoop River is that it has... It does change, and it can change pretty rapidly. And it's, well, and there was a group set up among public safety personnel, town leaders, in, in the five communities downstream, from Pittsfield down to Allentown and Pembroke, looking, looking at a number of issues associated with the river. And one of the, one of the things that they recommended was trying to nominate the river for designation. That process was begun. The towns north of there, Barnstead and Gilmington, were approached and asked, you know, "But this is, this is a regional sort of thing. We'd like you to participate. Could you have some, would you like to have some representation?" Could you have some, would you like to have some representation on this nomination committee? And you designated Chair David Kerr and Earl Chase, and they've been attending monthly meetings since November, since October, I guess, on this. And this included a public information session in December, on December eighth, down in Tychester. We, the regional planning commissions, Lake Region Planning Commission, and our partner Central New Hampshire Planning Commission have been working to collect information for the, that is required in the nomination document. And that is being developed in a draft that should be available in the next, in about ten days from now for public review and sonnet. And we're getting ready for a public, another public information meeting on April eighteenth. And by regulate by, according to these statutes, we are sending out notifications about that meeting to all the landowners along the river. And are sending out a letter to, a letter and some poster to each of the boards in the towns. And that will, that nomination will be, input will be taken on that, and then the state will have, and they will hold another public information session to ensure that there is public input. And what the, a lot of what the nomination document does is asks for what are the important features about the river? And, and that varies. In some cases, there's protect, there's already land that's protected. There may be wonderful stands of certain types of vegetation. There might be historical dams or historical mills. There might be great walking trails, snowmobile trails that go by, that go near, fishing sites, that sort of thing. I know that downstream, they're, they've got some dams, and those are things that are being documented. And we've had a good deal of input from all of the representatives on this nomination committee. There are two representatives from each of the seven communities. Once input comes in and it's reviewed by DES, they, as I said, they will get input in the, the document needs to be into DES by June first. And then there's opportunity for public input, for public comment on it, and they will send it on to the legislature. Legislature, if it, if there is a sponsor, if there's a local sponsor, and one of the things that they really look for is, is there local support for this? And then if there is, they'll, they'll move it along. As it's pointed out here, it needs to be voted on by the legislature and signed by the governor, and then this is all related to, there is an RSA four eight three that, that addresses this, and it lists out all of the eighteen rivers and segments in the state that already have been designated. And as, as is pointed out on the next, next page, there's, you know, some of the features I've already mentioned, hybrid tower, boating, fishing, wildlife habitat, history, drinking water. There are several communities downstream that their, their public water supply is the aquifer that's associated with the Suncooke River. There's, there are several dams downstream. One of the things that this group has been doing, they looked at was the, you can designate certain, there are four different types of classification of river segments. With natural, rural, rural community, and community. And there were, there was some discussion as to what is the most appropriate for different segments. And through discussion, we, we came to agreement that the rural community designation is most appropriate throughout all of Barnstead. And we have that down. By the way, the corridor, the corridor for the river extends, the designated corridor extends one thousand three hundred twenty feet on either side of the high river, high water mark. That's outlined in the purple there. And that's a quarter mile on either side. So that would be the, the area that is being designated, a quarter mile on either side of the river.
Conservative conditions.
On those boats and aquatic vehicles, are there any restrictions on two-studle waters?
No. I haven't read it in.
No, I, I just know of other areas where two-studle waters have been banned, so I didn't know if this was, you know, the same.
No.
I'm just curious.
Yep. Worth a thought.
Yes.
Yeah, my group at Planning Board. What you were just talking about, all the restrictions that Andy was talking about, is that in the corridor or strictly in the river?
That's in the river corridor. This is the river corridor. That's a quarter mile from the river.
I understand that, but this, this picture that you, that's a handout, the, the Suncooke River corridor includes Suncooke Lake up on the wall, is that correct?
Right, we, we, in discussion with Gilmington, they, their, their, the boundaries were changed and they reflected on this, and basically it stops at the, at the dam. At the, uh, Sun, at the.
More Lake Dam?
At the, at the.
It's good.
The dam up in Gilmington.
Crystal Lake Dam.
So it does include the Suncooke.
Yes, Crystal Lake.
Yes, it does include the Suncooke Rivers, the Suncooke Lake.
Okay, so now you're saying that that is gonna be limited boat, boat usage on Suncooke Lakes if this goes through?
Yes.
Within a hundred fifty feet?
Yes. Six miles an hour.
And what is it currently, what's the restriction currently?
There's none.
More than sixty.
Yes.
Yeah, there is a, there is a.
Fifty feet, whatever. And no water, no speed limit.
No, if you want, if you want to slow down back there, I think it's.
No, that's the only sign.
Can you repeat your question?
Does, does all that we've been talking about to this point, and the restrictions that we've been talking about to this point, and further in our discussions, have to do with strictly the river where it comes out?
Andy was talking about holding it, or be strict, boating?
Well, he said that boating within, within this whole thing is gonna be restricted to, to six miles an hour.
That's right.
No. Within a hundred fifty.
Back to that, really, if you can do this.
I mean, all the river, you don't go six mile an hour.
Yeah.
I do myself, maybe in the Lake River, I can go faster than. Yeah, that's kind, that's kind of scary, that, this, this is on industrial area.
Yeah.
That's what I'm worried about.
Okay?
And right now, the protection covers the whole industrial area. And there's a possibility, whether it might happen to help, we might get a business name or a seal or whatever, but we gotta make sure that we're going in there, we can go in.
Here's, here's us.
That's why I, I really would like the five boards to act for you when I know what I'm achieving.
Okay.
And perhaps, this part of the solution may be in modifying the designation, the type of, the, remember, there were four types, ranging from rural to community. And perhaps a community designation might be more appropriate. Which we did, in, in one of our meetings, we did talk about, uh, of that. Because, and there are, there are some differences to that. I believe this, this handout was, was passed out.
Yeah.
So instead of, right now, it's, it's being put back as rural community, it might be that community designation might be more appropriate. If you're not looking to that.
Load it this.
There's not much difference.
There isn't, there isn't, as you look at this, you're right. Uh, but if, if I go back to the RSA, uh, there are, there are some, some lines there. And part of that certainly does have to be dams, but not, credit for part of there, only we can have this. Yeah, this is, this is, feel free to mark that out.
I'll see what this comes in right here.
Yeah.
Okay. This is over here, this way, the town hall area. At this area here, also, I don't know how many towns it's all.
Okay.
What, what restrictions, what might have on salt usage, road grain, and success, if any of that would be affected in this buffer zone?
Yeah, here's salt.
I'm asking him, serious question.
Salt usage.
What is that, what is it?
They're, they're dependent on salt storage.
Okay. You're at, your salt storage is in the buffer zone?
Is the salt storage in the.
Okay.
That's, that's a bigger concern than the, on that. Than on the road.
So the, 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 like, no salt use area and. Well, it's in this buffer zone, we have a lot of roads.
Dave, most of these concerns are already because of the shoreline protection.
Yes, yes.
There isn't really any real restriction that's added on this. I mean, there's a concern for industrial development, a real concern, but the, the prohibitions against any industrial development are already exist.
Yeah.
Through shoreline protection. I think this is, I mean, my only, my part of this was just to get through the nomination, so that the advisory committee would be set up.
See, well, we were like.
And that's when.
Shoreline protections goes two hundred, we use it, it's fifty, anything within fifty feet, but you can still build over fifty feet, as long as you go within their rules and regulations. So this is anything over seventy-five feet, then you can stop building. And there's certain parts of there, there's those two hundred and fifty feet that are for building.
Slight to septic. Oh, septic or anything like that.
New septic, seventy-five feet. Which.
But that still falls under their.
That's a sure, yeah. This really doesn't.
I would just worry about something that could affect, would be saying buffer zone.
Yep.
Very, you know, cold business in this town.
Yep, yeah.
I'd have to see some of these.
Exactly, and the intent of this is not to step on, it doesn't step on or nullify local zones. And, you know, where the river flows through down that, some of Pittsfield. And, you know, Allentown, that area, it's not, let's see, I think Allentown, Allentown is looking to designate their section, the section through most of their town as a community designation.
Or not, Pedro, Pedro, do you want to?
I believe so.
Not that I need to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to extend what you said, David. If we're not adding additional layers of laws and governance here, then why have it at all? We already have a very comprehensive shoreline protection act, which protects our river, the Suncooke already falls under that jurisdiction. We already locally have a very comprehensive drinking water act at the town, and that kind of a few years back, that protects our aquifer and water. And the DES governs and has layers of protection, how you use the land next to the river. Why are we adding another layer of regulations whereby the government can't even enforce what they're regulating now? Is my question to Mr. Justice.
A big part of it is the opportunity for this local advisory committee to represent this community, as well as all the other communities up and down the corridor, to have input in terms of, A, developing a river corridor management plan, which would make recommendations regarding steps that, that locally you might take for addressing concerns that you locally see. And secondly, when someone, when the state, the federal government, local government is looking to do a project, is, is planning a project, that body, that local advisory committee gets an opportunity to provide input, they're not making a decision on it.
They're advisory only.
They're advisory.
So what they say will not really matter in the final decision? Yes?
I, I wouldn't say, no, I would say that what they, that they're, what I have seen in working with the Pembroke Geosse River Group.
Okay.
DES does take that into concern, take that into advisement. They also, any, anytime someone that would have to have a, a business or a budget group would be doing a shoreline permit, a wetlands permit, a dredge and fill type permit, then they would normally send it to the state, they also just make a copy of it and send it to the.
So another, another layer of bureaucracy for a potential project for an end user would have to.
It's not, it's only what I have in my discussions with wetland scientists, some of which are on this, on the nomination committee, who have worked in other parts of the state where they've had to do projects, they've said it's not, yes, it's making a copy. It's not a new.
So they're, they're informed only.
It's, it's, it's informing the local group of what's happening.
I think just, you just said that it could react to state decides.
It could.
But, I think I go a vice for it, because if, say, this board, our planning board, they're not authorizing somebody to move in, and they have all, trying to wetlands, wetlands agree with them and everything else, it could take a month to mention the committee, throw the whole thing out the window.
Man.
Somebody might not like somebody on, or what they're doing, so.
I'm not going.
That's not a bureaucracy.
Sure, you can always find something like that. My experience, again, my experience in working with the group in the Pembroke Geosse, it works from Franklin up through Thorndale. that works from Franklin up through Thorndale, Town of McHampton just recently built a, a, their municipal, their new municipal fire station. And it's off Route one and four, you could spit to the river from there. On a nice parcel of land, up on a block, they did need to, they realized our way through, oh, we need to notify the Penitent Jowas or the local advisory committee. They did, the chair and, and local representative came out, really on a moment's notice, talked, did a sidewalk, talked with the folks, exchanged ideas, and it moved forward. And likewise, up in, when PSU was putting in their new hockey rink, there was input, there was an opportunity to exchange ideas. Did DES take into account all of their recommendations? No. But there was dialogue and it was an opportunity. And the builder can take, if you do it ahead of time, the builder can take, the developer can take into account some of the local concerns.
Yes, I, I question and a comment. Does this, does this in any way, it doesn't look like it does, but does this in any way supersede the shoreline protection act? It doesn't look like it does, but I can, well, in one way it does, a hundred and fifty foot, but for, uh, speed on, on the lake, that, that supersedes, uh, the CSDP. The other question I had was, who, a lot smarter, sound like a smart person, whose brainstorm was this and why were you doing it? Okay? And is it mandatory? Is this something that the community, each individual community has an option to do, to opt in or opt out, or, or what? So I guess whose infinite wisdom brought this in about and why? And we already got this covered in CSDP. What benefit are we going to get from it that's not already there? It has a, excuse me, as a property owner on Crystal Lake, and I can tell you right now, the association is going to go nuts with this. This answers resale of property. See, the shoreline protection act already answers it bad enough. This, this is going to cause a major problem. So I guess, I guess I want to know from where to start.
Okay, your concern, your concerns are, I hear your concerns. Your concern primarily is the hundred, the, the speed limit within a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, what's written in here, but I'm, that, and I'm basically concerned is why are we even bothering with this when we've got a CS, a shoreline protection act? And I want to know if it was mandatory, and if it isn't, then whose brainstorm was it?
It's not mandatory. It was, it was an outgrowth, an outgrowth of a community that's been working for seven years in those five southern communities. And a lot of what happened, they've been working with the state, with their concerns about hazard mitigation and the flow of the river as a result of the 2008 flood in, in that, and the community's, and the, primarily the pollution, yes. And they've been working, they came up with a list of a number of different things to do, and this was, I don't even know if you said anything, whatever, let's see what happened, of things to do. They began moving this process forward. It's a, it's an opportunity for communities to work together on a regional basis, enhance communication, develop a plan for, that looks at, you know, what are the various needs along the river? What are the important things to protect? What are the important qualities? What are the important uses on the river, current uses? In some ways, some people have thought of this as akin to, parallel to a master plan for the river, although it is not, and it's a recommendation, the, the management plan. Those communities have been working together for, since 2010. There was an offer to, you know, let, there was some funding, they, there was an opportunity to put an effort together to build this nomination. These, Barnstead and Bemlinton are near the headwaters of, of the river and have very different characteristics than the southern part of the river. And let's take those into account. Now, as to your question about, is it mandatory, can communities not participate? The answer is yes. An example is the Penitent Jowas, where a couple of communities, there, there's a headwater community up in Francomea that does designate, and then it's fixed a couple of communities, and then the southern eleven commun, uh, eleven communities are part of it. Those communities have opted not to participate, I guess, um, that rivers, the river still does now fall under the CSDP.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say, I've just been having a poor moment. And I was, Michael Wollstein was on the Lenter River. And it was a pain for me. I had a screen house down there, so my wife could go read books, they told me I had to tear it down. They told me I, it was like a fallen hill down, and I couldn't go get the neighbors' cow, or a husband or, and throw it all over my bushes and stuff, they advised me not to, because it would leach into the river. I don't know, I wasn't too thrilled, I had to take, um, a swing, my green things went across the river, and they made me take that down, so.
Because of designation?
Yes. Like, that's when the day we came and designated river. I, it wasn't a big deal, but I felt it was my land, and they were a little bit, done it on me.
One more question here. Why? Well, we already have a wetland that. Is there any way that, through the regulations in here, instead of making it stricter, where you can just maintain the same wetlands that, as far as distances that we have now, instead of making them bigger? Any way of just, here, people, and maybe looking at, do you like, well, based on it? Which means, we have to build wetlands that, you know, we, 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 by the way, the way that rules, the rules are right now, leave them alone, don't make them any stricter. Yours, yours is making them stricter and more further. Which means you can still protect the waters, we can still protect them, but still allow what we already have, without changing, making it more strict. Every time, that's what you guys are doing, to make this more strict than what the wetlands are.
And one for the shoreline protection.
Yeah, on the shoreline protection act. You're making it stricter than what they have. If you just leave it to the shoreline protection act and leave it that, like, making it stricter as far as the water speeds, you don't, that should be up for local association.
I will, I would talk with the, I would talk with the river coordinator about this.
Well, I think that's what you're here for, to that, and that's a good idea.
Right, yeah. Yes, oops.
Hey, Michael Wollstein, Mr. Jefferson. Along the river, there's, with the agricultural use, there's some landowners that have needed right to use the water. How will this designation affect their use?
You're, you're talking about extracting water, use in, in form of...
Yes, will that go away, or will that not be affected?
Um, it probably, I can't, there is one element in here called the in-stream flow. It's being, uh, and the idea behind in-stream flow is to protect the, the various uses along the river, along rivers.
What type of uses would you define as various uses?
It, it could be agri, it's agriculture...
So the one, the one I just described, okay? What else, what else would be the various uses?
The fishing.
Okay.
Uh, waters, if it, if it's being used for water supply, for drinking water, or, or sewage systems in any way, I don't think that it is along this river. Boating, swimming, recreation. And there are, there is, there is language in the RSA, the RSA 483, which addresses this whole program. And it, it said, it speaks to in-stream flow programs, an in-stream flow program. And the state is piloting two programs, they're doing studies that were, they were directed by the state legislature to do these multi-gear studies down on the Exeter and Pechiko rivers to figure out what are the uses that are, that, that are being used? How can, how can you begin to not control that, but get a sense of what the needs are in conjunction with the natural flow of the river? Rivers go through periods of high water flow.
Sure, sure.
But one of the aspects of this is, it, it says categorically, water cannot be taken out of the watershed, the river watershed area. So, for example, you're not, you're not shipping water down to Portsmouth.
And again, and again, that's our local regulations, Eddie, our local regulations protect that too, the states within our aquifer. So, so again, back to my question, how will this designation, and what is this going to do to farmers, agricultural users who depend on that water and have a right to that water, as DED?
Right.
Is it, or is it not going to affect it?
Well, it, I can't say absolutely. But it, what I can say is that the idea of the in-stream flow program will, will take into account, yes, there, there, there's maybe some agriculture in Barnstead that is taking water out, but there may also be agriculture downstream in Allentown. And who, who gets the most, who gets the right? Is it the first one in, with their hose and...
Well, it's divided equally, so we know there's, what, nine point four million gallons going past my house in a twenty-four hour period. So you take that, and you start calculating, you're going to get this, you're going to get that, that's how this is going to go with that.
Probably. I mean, you can't water your garden anymore.
Well, they're going to be allowed so many gallons, and that'll be it, and there'll be someone to monitor it.
How are you going to monitor it?
Don't ask me.
I've, I've been pumping my garden from the river across here for twenty years.
I can't, there is...
But that's not a deal, actually, it isn't, because it falls within a quarter mile of that river that's full of Flo Bigger River. The protection area. Well, over Flo Bigger, Bigger River, which is a quarter mile away from, up the river. And that's where I pump my water, the water in my yard, the water in my gardens and flowers and, you know.
Well, I, I, I've, I've not been involved in the science of the, of the in-stream flow program. I do know that they are, they've been doing pilot work down in Pechiko and Exeter to understand what the, what the various flow regimes are through there, and get a sense of what's happening. And the, they are, they will be publishing, the presenting this at the end of this year to the legislature, and the legislature will make some decisions about what to do in the next two to, two to ten years. That's going to be interesting.
Dave, I don't, I don't really know if there's any flow that's, that's controlled by this, by other regulations, it's basically, you know, the water controls, I know the transfer of the water watershed, I don't know whether it is, but I don't, I just want to know if there's anything, under this act, that, under the designation of, be regulated.
It's not, it's not regulating, it's, but it does, I don't want to try and say it's not in there, but there is language in there speaking to...
They're going to, Dave, they're going to address how that water's, whether you're going to be allowed to use that water, because it's, it's a different layer of protection. And he had to be, I think, he answered that. There could be, there could be, it's possible.
My, my comment is, I would think DES would know about water rights. My experience with water rights out west is that it's real property, it's measured in CMS, just cubic feet per second. There's also a USGS survey, river age on the Suncook, that you can go online and check the flow, and it's in North Chichester. So, once in a while, out of curiosity, I go see what the flow is.
What, what are the flows?
They're really low, it's only like two thousand feet.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's low.
And I do know that western water rates are very different from eastern water rates.
Yeah, and that's because I know out west, it's tangible property, and a whole bunch of children use them.
Right, it is different from these, these sort of, Dave, do you hear that?
This is a, that's a made call river, if you include it, well, it's not, because it's headwater on it, is that...
Because the river, the river does flow through, I mean, Crystal Lake is the headwaters of, of the river.
Yeah.
It's fed by, it's fed by, it's fed by stream, uh, I would probably, quote unquote, river.
But the, but the...
They are connected by water. But if you use that analogy, then so is it, Mont Lake, and so is it Red and the Pond, and, uh...
So many feet on each side.
Not true, you know, if you're including those, then, I guess, my original question though is this, is there some way we could designate quote unquote the river and not the lake? In other words, can we, can, which wouldn't mess up the situation very much, but can you like designate from the dam on Suncook, Valley Dam, I'm, skate my brain, could you, could you say like, if we designate like from Valley Dam down to the Pittsfield line as a rural community river? Because I haven't, to be honest with you, I haven't seen anybody out there in a speedboat, most of them are, I haven't seen that yet.
You were, you're not even asking.
I know that they have, I, I know that people go out there and fish in boats, kayaks, and, you know, but I haven't really seen anybody who are speeding out there, but I probably have, I've been around. Is there some way to just like designate that without going into the lakes or not?
There may be, it, it, I mean, the, the desert, just as, just as the, in discussions with the nominee, they, there were, originally, the concept had been to include all of Crystal Lake. And the nominee made it, well, no, let's not do, that that would be hard to do.
I just want to leave the whole thing. You got to push the lake, uh...
Here.
Here, and then you've got, um...
It's not good, but...
Actually, doesn't happen, happen, I don't have to, like, happen with a... Actually, doesn't happen, happens, I don't have to say, happens with a connection to operate by a stream. And then that has a connection to, that stream goes down to the river. Yeah, but then Brennafon continues on. So you have other bodies of water, you have other bodies of water connected to the river, and it just seems, people are going to talk about the river itself without involving upriver Little Crystal Lake.
There was always a process, there was always a such a river.
So I was just thinking, is there some way to designate the river without designating the waters as the water? Doesn't for that, they don't designate there, we're not going to designate that.
That may be, that may be, the only thing, the only thing I think about is that in the, in the RSA, if we were, if we were talking about doing that and skipping over the lakes, that may not be a large enough section to designate. Starting here, just starting here and going down might be a possibility. Very well likely.
It's only a thought, because I.
There is a lake, a personal lake, shoot, but that's the beginning of the whole thing.
Right, that's a, like, sort of a half and all. Yeah.
That's the beginning of such a lake.
So.
Some of the river protection.
They've been, they've been part of the dialogue.
Because I had it on the upper.
Who, who actually makes the nomination?
They roughly, the legislature would bring it to, they would bring it to the state legislature for consideration to be designated.
So I guess from a local level, I'm just saying, from a one-term quota, from, from this meeting, from this meeting, let's just say, we have a safe argument, that everybody is on board, let's just, from, from here to the legislature, how does that process work?
Okay. It, as I said, there's a, there's a public information meeting, April 18th, Chichester, this town hall. And comments will be taken, VDS will be there to take in some of those comments and that sort of thing. We're, we're working on a draft of the nomination document. And it will be available to review in a value or so. And so you can look over it, you can go to the information center. Be part of that dialogue. Then we'll take into account all the comments that we hear from all the communities. And then submit that to that nomination to the river coordinator at VDS. She will have, she will hold a public session, another public listening session. And then send it on to, and, and that's June 1st. And then she will send it on to the commissioner of VDS.
So for the people of Barnstead, the other groups all the way down, you know, one, two, they decided they had some great things they wanted to do. And Barnstead, the people in town, through these workshops and other meetings, decided they were really not interested. There's no way for the other towns to push Barnstead into the designation. No.
And quite frankly, quite frankly, you're in a great position in having two thoughtful members on your nominating committee who don't seem to be hesitant about speaking out.
Certainly, no, I was just curious, how the process.
Did you say where the April 18th meeting was?
Chichester Town Hall.
And the time on that? What, what time is that meeting?
Six thirty?
I believe it, I believe it's six thirty. There are notices are being sent out.
So is the central school that's at town hall.
Notices are being sent out this week to all the planning board, conservation commission, and select.
Did you get a notice?
And they're, they're also, the people on the river. They're also going out to all of the right area, all of the riverfront landowners.
So will we get a notice?
Yes, will be. That's what I was.
Dave, Mike, Marcus.
We're not on top of it.
How far in advance are you supposed to be notified?
As far as two weeks.
Is that our name?
Yeah, we're ten days. The local advisory committee, that's been processed all the time. But can the committee make a recommendation that we leave, like, the lake house, which is through that check from Valley Dam?
Non-may to make.
Well, we have to, we have to take steps to get to the nominating.
These are the nominations.
We've taken, we've taken.
Who's on the nominating committee?
I'm sorry, this is my first meeting.
I know that some folks have been, been bent out of shape, that they haven't known about this, that there have, there were folks in the planning board that did come to the initial meeting. There were Barnstead folks who did come to the December 8th or 18th meeting. There were two or three Barnstead, there were one Barnstead group and some of the other towns. There's a, in the town report, there's a report there. I was just wondering, was, as, as the nominee already been. It's, so, yes, the nomination elected? Nominating committee, from Barnstead, represented by Dave Kerr and Earl Chase. Who did request, was it anyone? I think requesting people who were interested in it.
I know, I remember this.
Right, I just didn't know.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I mean, we ended up with Earl. One person wasn't up, so I.
But that drawn, that drawn nominated, it's kind of more of a common one than.
Right. No, I, I look at the nominating committee as a chance, as a, as a step to, once, if this is set up, then the opportunity will be to be on the committee who, folks who are interested in it, to take part in the discussions with the other towns and river line problems. I'm thinking primarily of the recreation areas, the rest of the. I don't, I'm not really, I just don't know how many industries are already located, if I said, but maybe one of the main opportunities in town would be the snowmobile trails, hiking trails along the river, use of the river itself, it's later, it's more.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, we want to make, this commission, this, this commission doesn't need to make the rules any stricter than they already are by the way they are. That's all they're making, why make it any stricter? And anytime, anytime something comes up on a new rule, it makes it harder and harder for the others to do anything else. And it's time just to sit back and think. Okay, that is a nice place to start, we need to take care of it. But why do we have to make the laws any stricter than they already are?
Very strict right now, do I agree?
Well, obviously, the community is taking three and four thousand dollars or something to it for milk. So, and, and take care of it, protect.
They do that.
Get it taken home, but I, I guess my concern is the lake, and.
What about the rest of us on the river? You know, you have, you have to talk about the rest of the landowners on the river.
If you designated the river itself without getting into the lake, where would you think that's going to impact?
My whole property will fall in this zone. So if someone, so if someone at state level is going to tell me how to use my property, that's what's going to happen. That's what I see is going to happen in the future. And if you eliminate the lakes, isn't that discriminatory, the fact that now it falls on my shoulders? From my island?
I, but that would include the whole parade area anyway, the quarter mile.
That's what I'm saying, okay? Anybody else living on there? No, I mean, Dave too would be affected. Anybody that has a motorboat on there, so on that segment of river, is going to be limited to six miles per hour.
There should be anywhere in the state law. There should not be fifty feet away from the shore, on a river that's forty, fifty feet wide.
But there's wide sections there, David. But now it's going to, it's going to definitely blank it out.
Well, I, I just need a lot more information on that.
I do too, but what I'm starting to see is, is not very good for the future.
I'll say my point, if it was up to me right now, I just wouldn't vote for it. That's my opinion.
Uh, if the points taken, I'd like to encourage you to stay involved. There's the process, we are working through a process. We do, as I mentioned before, we want to get input. There will be opportunities for more input. Both, yes, both are common. Do you have a question, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I hear a, a thing in the conservation commission, Jim was here, the chairman couldn't be here tonight. And I hadn't been involved in a process of nominating before. So I'm learning, I've read through this, I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't realize the importance of, of clean water and taking care of our water. That's not the issue. The issue is another layer of governmental regulation. And, you know, it's our, it's our responsibility, the Christian responsibility, to help safeguard the natural resources of the town, so. We'll probably have a good discussion about this tomorrow. My question is, how does the committee, how does the two representatives of Barnstead know how the town feels? How are you going to know, it's this nomination committee that puts forth the nomination, and how are you going to know how the town feels?
Public hearing?
How do we get to that point?
Finding out right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is the only public hearing we've ever had before you build that. Am I going to do another one in Barnstead?
Well, we had the presentation here, the presentation here before, and it was the public hearings. It wasn't enough, but certainly, it's certainly being heard now.
And there are six hundred of the planning board.
Right.
So first thing, this whole.
This is all for the weekend.
And maybe that, one of the advantages would be that you might be more eligible for governmental grants, which seem to be drying up.
Right.
But there, you know, there supposedly, this is a much, there's much more opportunity for help with planning.
Exactly.
And planning's good, we all plan every day, we plan, we plan, we do. So I can do it every day. But I don't, I don't really see, you know, this, this committee is supposed to be helping with planning and produce a plan for the watershed. That's not an easy thing to do from a bunch of volunteers, but. Well, I'll break before the commission, and I'll try to get some kind of response back to, to you, Kerr, and, and to Mr. Chase. So that at least you know how the committee feels.
Yeah, my, my thinking on this was at least, once the, once it was nominated, assuming it was, then the real work would be with this, the local commission. Then that's what would be, any decisions or plans, that's, that's when that's done.
It's an awful long process, as before it's actually designated, so. Plenty of opportunity to, um, direct through the legislative action.
Thank you. If after, if after consideration and discussion and talking about this, we will be asking for letters of support, both from the selectmen as well as conservation commission panel board. If you find that that's something that you can do, as the, as you see the document, the designation move forward. And if it's something that you can support, we'll be, we will be asking for support. We appreciate a letter sent in, on behalf of whatever group.
I think there's going to be a lot of landowner concerns about people that keep wanting to.
Sure.
I think, I think pushing more restriction on landowners is not going to be acceptable. That's my guess, and I'm not on the river, but there are people here that are, they're probably, yeah, they're probably restricted for what they can and can't do.
Well, I, when I made that comment about two lakes, yeah, I'm a pretty good sized piece of property owner, and I have lots to say, but that, that's not what I was intending. The point I'm intending is, there's, I don't know how many lots on that lake.
Well, that's, the upper lake, there's.
No, 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 I mean existing lots, with camps on it. People go to sell their houses, their camps, especially in these times, they're having enough trouble trying to sell them. Now you've put another restriction on, on that body of water. And I want to expound on this, and I don't only mean the lake, I mean the whole river, because there's people that have cottages on, along homes along the river too. So it goes, it goes to them, that that is another hindrance in them, one, selling that piece of property, and number two, getting even a relatively fair price for it. It's a restriction, another restriction in the sale of a piece of property or the use of your own property. Two-fold statement in there, didn't I guess? So I, I understand where you're coming from on leaving the lake out, but I feel this is bad for the people along the river that might want to sell or use their, their property as they're using it now without these additional restrictions.
My purpose in saying about the lake was that really, my, my opinion, and I wouldn't have any of the other, I'm sorry, but it may also include other bodies of water that filter into the, that go to the river or connect to the river, via another body of water, which is exactly where that came from, Crystal Lake. So my reason for mentioning that, trying to keep up with it, was, well, if you're going to designate the river, then let's see what the restrictions are going to be and go from there.
That's why I.
But anyway, that one lake.
That's why I was saying, I think, maybe it's just more about, I, I think it's just left it, that, I have no problem about designating a shoreline area. My problem is making it more stricter than what it ought to be. If the state right where the shoreline is protected and was no more infusing into people's property, into their lives, leaving both the way they voted, or leaving everything the way it is, but you can still protect what's there. Does that make any sense? I don't know the other problem, but that's, you're still protecting it.
I, I'd like to comment on Clark's comment about property values. The, there is another unintended consequence of that when it affects property values. When property values go down, the town loses from the standpoint that they don't get as much revenue, which means that the only way that they get more revenue is to raise the tax rate to compensate for that, something else to take in, into account. The other thing that I have a question for you about has to do with moorings, people wanting to put up docks for their boats. What, what is the impact on, on all of them? Are there, are there going to be more regulations in regard to putting in things of that nature?
I've not read of any of those. I'm not aware of any of those. You have to.
You have to go through here, if you're, if you're doing any building on that, like water, and dig in a hole, you have to get permission.
Well, that, that's not part of, that's, that's part of the state's regulations, that's not part of this. This is, you're, you're.
Yes, I was, I was before D E S.
Shoreland, that's, that was, that's shoreline.
No, I have the property before we had the shoreline, property thing, before you had the two hundred and fifty, that just came in, well, a year ago, the two fifty. The five hundred was here, I mean, the fifty feet was here for a long time, but the two hundred and fifty feet just came in.
Well, it was a lot of, that was a modification of the comprehensive shoreline protection, which, which does impact all of the Suncook River already.
So what do we need?
But what I'm saying is, is I didn't have that, and they were, all we had was going into the, making it a designated river, so, and they, they came down, it was quite a few. I know I had a greenhouse and they had to take it down.
Who was saying, but, yeah, who was saying?
Uh, the people that were contacting.
The I T committee?
Yes, I, I don't know, this was already, it was already in effect, because I had just kind of ignored it. And then when they finally did, they came and told me, and they told me to take down that greenhouse, and I couldn't cut any of the things down there, they told me I shouldn't have the manure that might run down into the.
That, okay, that's a good practice for the, for water.
Yeah, that was quite a way to weigh that one, we could have run it, just push it. And, I mean, yeah, but another aspect of protecting. For the benefit, for the benefit that I got out of it, you know, it didn't, it didn't increase me any, any of my, I mean, to work on the property or anything else, I didn't see anything that was added to the value in any way.
I appreciate, I appreciate your input, for everything, you know, and I thank you. Yeah, I have to comment, thank you. My own information, is there anyone on the planning board supporting this? Going ahead.